Hope we have a good tour, okay? Couple more people coming in.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. If able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hans.
Here.
Councilmember Caudell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. In accordance with governing body rules and procedures, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal and pertinent or slanderous. We do have a sign-up sheet here this evening, and first one on this list is Raymond Delgado. Delgado, sir, if you come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
My name's Raymond Delgado. My address is eighty-one thirty-eight West Fifty-Six Terrace here in Merriam. I'm here about the calming curves. A year ago, I came in here and talked to you guys about the same thing. The calming curves, you guys have managed to look at the speed of everybody speeding through there. I don't know what the results are of that, but I still see it. The calming curves have two solid yellow lines on them, and that's for us to stay on our side. Last time I looked inside the driver's handbook, it meant do not cross those lines. Well, the people are still doing it, and they're driving straight through. The problem that it is causing is it's a safety hazard, especially for the children in the area that are on school buses. What is the one thing that a school bus does not have on it?
Seat belts.
It's seat belts. So, children on there, if these people are not paying attention or just disregarding it and driving straight through like I've seen, and I have video of it, I have a dash cam in my truck, and I've been walking through the neighborhood because my wife and I walk just to exercise, and I've got video of people doing that. I've seen Merriam vehicles not paying attention to it. I've seen UPS, FedEx, Amazon, and regular people just driving through the neighborhood. So, I'm trying to get this, that part of the street straightened out because it'll give everybody enough room to drive through there. I pull an RV. I own an RV, and when I bring it home to load it up, when my wife and I go out, I cross over the line. There's not enough room. But if the street is straight, I can pass, and somebody can pass on the other side of me. I know that this was done in two thousand and five. The lady that asked for this to be done no longer lives in Merriam. I'm just trying to get it straightened out so that we don't have problems that are going to come down the pipe. It's just a drop in the bucket to fix that as opposed to what it costs for the market up here, the Grand Station. One hundred and thirty-six million is what we, what the council's voted on unanimously thirteen. So, and then you've got the other one that's coming up, the marketplace. It's a hundred and twenty million dollars. You're getting ready to do some work with the conduit on the lights and fix that. You guys are going to repair those. Well, walking through there, I can see that the conduit's where they line up. It stays on the side of the curb. So, straightening the street out is not going to affect that. If we can straighten out the street, I think you're going to see a difference in the neighborhood. I've got a petition that I started last year, and this is just with the people on Goodman Street that have signed this, that want it straightened out because they have the same issue. I'll submit this to you.
Thank you. I'll get that to our city clerk. Thank you.
I'm not the only one that's concerned with it. My neighbors are concerned with it. There's about ten houses just on Goodman that did not sign that. Some of them didn't sign it because some of them are work for the city. Understand that. That's a conflict of interest for them. I got it. But everybody else, there are a couple of them that didn't do it. One house was being renovated. Some people weren't home. Every time I went back, they weren't home. I waited a year to see if anything was going to change, and you can look at the dates on there from when I had started having signatures on there. It was the sixth of September. So, now we're on the twenty-second of September, and I still don't see anything. But I still see you guys, like I said, looking at the speed, controlling the speed. It's not happening. They're still speeding up and down the street. If the calming curves are supposed to do what they're supposed to do, then how come that block stretched from Johnson Drive down Goodman all the way down to Fifty-Fourth and Terrace? How come that is the only street in Merriam that has those calming curves? Why didn't everybody else get them? If you're talking about safety for the people, then everybody should have had them at that time. That didn't happen. Just one street. There's only one other street, and that's on Hardy, and both of us are right before we cross into Overland Park. Hardy has a speed hump on it. People still go up and down that, but as soon as they see that speed hump, they slow down. Why? Because most people are going to bottom out unless you're driving a big truck. So, with that, I'm just asking for you to come out, look at it, monitor it, see what I see, see what my neighbors see, and see if we can come to some conclusion here of how to fix it. Because at some point in time, it, as far as I know, it hasn't happened yet, but there will be an accident at some point in time. And do we really want to risk it being a school bus with your children on it? Because my youngest is thirty-five, so I don't want, I don't want to see it, and my neighbors are the same way.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Yeah, your time is currently up, but we will pass your request on, and we'll have our public board director take a look at that, and our police department look at the speeding, and I got to figure out why this thing is doing this. Sorry. But thanks for your concerns, and like I say, we will look into it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The, I don't have anyone else that's currently signed up this evening, but that would not preclude anyone from coming forward at this time. Mr. Crone, please come forward. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. Billy Crone, six-six-three-three Wed Street. I want to second what Mr. Delgado said. Those calming curves are silly. They got redone too some point in the last ten years. I remember some of you in the council today were there when they got re-engineered, but they weren't removed at the time. They just got built a different way. I would like to see those gone as well. And I also want to bring a safety concern on our streets to your attention. In all the door-knocking I've been been doing, there was a neighbor who mentioned the eastbound lanes of Sixty-seventh Street. After you go under the highway, there's not any overhead signage designating what the lanes are for. And there's a lot of folks that take the middle lane and then cut off to make the second left turn. There's two left turns, one getting on the highway, one getting on east frontage. And I think they used to be painted on the ground. If there is, it's pretty faded. But a lot of other intersections with unique situations like that have signs on the masts next to the lights to indicate what those lanes are for, and I think it would be appropriate to have signs there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? I see no one else coming forward, so we will close out the public portion of the meeting. Next item up this evening is consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered, oh my gosh, they gave me a new computer, are considered routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. We do have three items this evening on the consent. Is there anyone who wants any of those items removed? Go ahead, Mr. Cozmeier.
I don't need it removed. I just have a question about the WaveTronics system for Director Kunki.
Okay, sure. Director Kunki, could you come up and answer Mr. Cozmeier's question before we vote on this?
So, from what I was reading, it looks like this isn't going to change how our lights interact with the rest of the street and project green light and all that. It's just going to change how it sees cars.
Right, and it's, WaveTronics is like a radar system that detects cars. So, like when you have cameras, sometimes the fog or they get knocked out of the way, so this is a more reliable system. So, we're kind of going towards WaveTronics at most of our intersections now.
Cool.
Has it answered it?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kunki. Okay, having, is there anyone else who wants anything else removed? Or, okay, having said that, I would entertain a motion. Okay, Mr. Silvers.
I'll make the motion, Mayor. I just need to double-check so we can do one motion for all of these.
Yes, yes, because he did not have that remembered.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve consent agenda items one through three.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is the mayor's report, and I have two proclamations this evening. One of my most exciting things to do as the mayor. First one is near and dear to my heart. It's proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. So, let me start by reading this, and then we'll call them forward in just a moment. Whereas, the city of Merriam is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Merriam, Kansas and visiting, and whereas, fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risk. And whereas, most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas, the National, excuse me, Fire Prevention Association, NFPA, reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas, residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only UL-listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas, the twenty-twenty-five Fire Prevention Week's theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries In Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely and to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, Mayor of the Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October fifth through the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, as Fire Prevention Week, proclaimed on this twenty-second day of September, twenty-twenty-five, by Pape, Mayor. And I have several individuals in our audience that would like to come forward. I'd like to present this to them. We have Fire Chief Alan Long, Fire Marshal Mike Casey, Risk Management Officer Shane Hurst, and Battalion Chief John Heffernan. So, if you guys would come forward, meet me at the podium out there, and I'll present this to you. We giving this to the Fire Marshal Chief?
Yep.
Thank you. So, this is for your take?
Thank you, all right.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you for protecting our city. Okay, second proclamation is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I'd like to read that at this time. Whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen-seventy-seven by a delegation of Native nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas, a growing number of cities and towns in the United States have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day to celebrate indigenous heritage and resiliency. And whereas, the city of Merriam recognizes it was founded and built upon lands first inhabited by indigenous peoples of this region. And whereas, the city of Merriam acknowledges and honors the historical, cultural, and contemporary significance of indigenous members in our community. And whereas, the city of Merriam wishes to preserve and promote the history and culture of all indigenous people, and that the time has come to observe a yearly holiday in their name. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Indigenous Peoples' Day, proclaimed on this twenty-second day of September, twenty-twenty-five, by Pape, Mayor. I don't think we have anybody this evening, Madam Clerk, to present this to, but this will go in our file. So, let's give a round of applause for all indigenous people in all those countries. Thank you. Okay, I always like to tell a few things that I and the other council members have been doing over the past two weeks, so let me delve into that. I went to give blood at the Battle of the Bulge's Blood Drive between the police and the fire. It's my understanding that it was a very close competition, but the real winner was those individuals getting the blood. Cookies were good, but they were out of Diet Coke, just for the record. But I think we did get beat again this year. I don't know what the exact numbers were, but, okay, a couple of council members attended the Idahois Board Meeting with Miss Guard to ask questions about the single trash holler and answer and about everything else that's happening in Merriam. I guess they talked about a lot of stuff over there, so that was, that was well attended. I attended the Johnson County and Wyandotte County Mayor's Dinner Meeting. It was hosted by Mayor Tom Stephens of Bonner Springs. This meeting was dedicated to the upcoming host of meetings and the guest speakers for the coming year. I attended the nine-eleven memorial ceremony at the Overland Park Training Center. It's hard to believe that this event occurred twenty-four years ago. Many today have no idea what occurred on that fateful day. The purpose of this memorial is so that we never forget the sacrifice that occurred. I'd just like to say four-hundred-and-forty-one first responders died that day. Three-hundred-and-forty-three of them were New York firefighters, seventy-one law enforcement, fifty-five military, and eight paramedics, and two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-two civilians died on that day. Many more have died since, from illnesses they sustained on that day. I attended the Northeast Chamber of Commerce Banner and Beer's Event at Strip's Chicken. I and several council members attended and volunteered at the Turkey Creek Car and Motorcycle Show. This is one of my favorite events. We set a new record, my understanding, as we did, at three, is Director Slocum, yes, three forty, three thirty-nine, three hundred and thirty-nine people. Thank you, Director Slocum. The hardest part of my day is the mayor's choice. I picked a nineteen-sixty-five Corvette that the owner received from his dad in nineteen-sixty-five when he graduated from high school. I thought I had a great dad, but I mean, he got a Corvette and, you know, a high school present. Anyway, nothing, pretty impressive. But anyway, a council member attended the Common Grounds Habitat for Humanity KC to learn about the housing needs, and take a tour of the Heartland Park Habitats Development in Alatha, which, if you don't know, is one hundred-and-fifty-eighth of Black Bob. I attended a West Vernon Block Party. I let them know what's happening in the city, and that we would be sending out a postcard asking their opinion on sidewalks and islands prior to us addressing stormwater or mill overlay that's going to occur on the streets. I stress the importance of letting us know what their views are down there. I also attended the Johnson County Criminal Advisory Council Meeting. We got a detailed presentation on the co-responder program, which we just heard about, but I got a second version of it. And actually, they determined that we're going to be offering assistance to people all over the country about that program because it's been so successful here. I and a council member met with Mr. Engel to develop tonight's agenda, and I attended the Northeast Johnson County Mayor's Meeting. Lots of discussion on what's going on in each cities. So, that's the end of my report. I don't know if I missed any other council people's activities for the last two weeks. There is, entertained? Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. I don't, I have, I have a new computer this evening, and we're going to have to see our IT guy because it just, it just shut off, so I'm going to have to fire this back up again, but I apologize for that. Maybe I can go to my regular agenda here and see where we're at next. First item up is council items, and that's approve a resolution and subsequent release of liens. We have Mr. Engel come into the podium for that. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council. First item on your agenda this evening is approve a resolution and subsequent release of liens with Merriam Grand Station X LLC. In August of twenty-twenty-three, city council approved the issuance of two series of industrial revenue bonds to enable a sales tax exemption for construction materials, equipment, and furnishing relating to the development at Merriam Grand Station. The first of those two series of IRBs were associated with the restaurant and retail buildings, which also includes the civic activity space back behind as well as the surface parking, and those were in the amount of six-point-seven-five million dollars, an amount not to exceed six-point-seven-five million dollars. To facilitate that process, the city acquired a leasehold interest in Merriam Grand Station property pursuant to a base lease and lease agreement, which is, again, is the mechanism that enables the IRBs to operate. Per those agreements, the city is required to terminate the base lease and the lease and release all of its interest in the project upon adequate notice once the bonds have been fully paid or other obligations and duties of the company under the lease have been performed. So, this is actually a good thing. This is, we're going to close these IRBs out at the restaurant retail, actually before the last retail or restaurant is open, which is Shake Shack, which will be opening this week. The attached resolution provides the legal authority for the city to complete the transaction, and the attached release of leases, formally releases, terminates and discharges the city of Merriam's interest in the base lease agreement and the lease. The attached documents were drafted by Jacob Lowery, our bond counsel, with Kutec Rock, who was in attendance. And as well in attendance, we've got Scott Miller representing Merriam Grand Station X. Happy to answer any questions, as I'm sure those gentlemen would be.
Did we have any questions for Mr. Engel at this time? Go ahead, Mr. Leahy.
I just wanted to ask how far ahead of schedule or ahead of our deadlines was Merriam Grand Station? Because I know they've done a great job and have been really on top of it.
Yeah, they actually head till the end of next year by the terms of the RDA, so they, they were moving and grooving out there. So, we're really happy to see them open and operating on the timeline that we're currently on.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel? Okay. Do we need to see Mr. Miller, or are we, we're good with what has been decided so far? Okay, all right. Well, thank you then. I would entertain a motion for this then. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of the Merriam Grand Station commercial project, the execution of a release of leases, and further authorizing certain additional related actions in connection with the city's not to exceed six-point-seven-five million industrial revenue bond series twenty-twenty-three issuance.
Yeah, we have a motion. A second? Ms. Yodrich.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I second.
Yeah, we have a motion. Second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like next item up would be approve a contract with Icon Structures. Okay, I'm coming forward here. We have Caleb Hunt. It's good. I don't know what your title is.
That's all right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Caleb Hunt, for those who don't know me, I'm the facility superintendent here.
Facility Superintendent.
Yep. So, the next item in your packet is the bid documents for the second phase of the city hall improvements. These improvements include upgrades to the first floor, the waiting area in the lobby, carpet throughout the lobby, signage and wayfinding, and desk encounter modification. All of these, all of these improvements will continue to improve customer service and workflow for the public and the employees here. We did a formal bid process through, with Clerk and Anderson, who is the city architect. We received five bids that were all significantly under budget, with the low bid being Icon Structures Incorporated. Icon is currently working with Johnson County, doing a court video remodel, and they are currently remodeling the City of DeSoto, City Hall. I spoke with the City of DeSoto, and they said they would hire him again, no questions asked, and they came highly recommended from the school district that they had done some work for it too. So, if this item's approved tonight, a notice to proceed will go out tomorrow. That doesn't mean construction will start tomorrow. What that'll allow us to do is meet with the architect and staff with the contractor to provide a updated construction timeline, and it will allow them to start procuring materials that may have longer lead times. They indicated that construction will be about seventy-five days of this contract. The construction will be disruptive, but they have phased it in a way that all three public counters will stay open and serviceable and accessible throughout the project. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions for Superintendent Hunt? Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say that I don't think that this remodel will be disruptive. I think, I just like to look at it as one year for as, or one day for as many years as Merriam has been around.
Right.
Go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
I just have a quick question. One of the, oh, never mind. I'm sorry. I read this incorrectly. I was going to ask about the furniture, but the original estimate didn't include furniture, so the, we'll be procuring the furniture as the city, not through the contractor.
Yes, and we did that to, to get out of markup and that kind of stuff.
One hundred percent. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Hans.
And it's delightful to see this finally come up because I was, it was so long ago, I was on the Art Committee when this first started, so, thank you. I don't know. Does anyone know what the date is on the plans?
I'd have to look at them. They've been updated.
Definitely pre-COVID.
Yeah, they've been updated, so it was pre-COVID.
Any other questions for Superintendent Hunt? Okay, well, seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion for this. Ms. Hans. Oh, excuse me. Oh, this way. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a construction contract with Icon Structures, Inc., for the City Hall Interior Improvements Project.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Ray, a second.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, we have a motion. A second.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitney, or Yodrich. So, sorry.
Um, aye. Sorry, threw me off.
I know. It is your name. Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like next item up is staff information items, and we've got community development update, I think. Got Director Dyer come to the podium.
Yeah, Mayor, council members, just a couple of things to update on my own. First of all, we have gotten in the Marketplace Apartment Place Apartment Complex Building Permit Application, so we have started the review on that, so that is in our offices now, and as I said, under review. And then, wrapping up our twenty-twenty-five grant season, getting really close to getting all the projects in and getting them reimbursements for that. So, obviously, as we wrap up twenty-twenty-five means we immediately start transitioning into twenty-twenty-six. And one of the things that we did last week was sent out eighty-eight letters to those property owners and residents or owner occupants of homes that have gravelled driveways. So, we have sent them directly the application and a letter explaining the program. So, those went out last week, and then, like I said, we're starting, getting the twenty-twenty-six grant programs up and running, working on the applications, working on getting them out on the website to get them ready for the first of the year. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Dyer? My gosh, I guess you did a good job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next item up is the August financial update. Finance Director Borth come into the podium.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council. There is nothing for me to report as far as August finances go. No cause for concern, and revenues and expenditures are either exceeding our expectations or tracking right on. Happy to answer any questions, though.
Any questions for Director Borth? Go ahead, Mr. Cozmeier.
The sales tax tranches?
Yes.
Those are two months behind?
One month.
One month, okay.
Yes.
Cool. I was looking at, you know, the-
So, it is on track. Yeah, we're actually technically ahead of track if you look at it that way. So it is on track, yeah, we're actually technically ahead of track if you look at it that way, so.
Cool, cool.
Any other questions? Gosh.
Thank you.
There's no questions, thank you. Well, we're just moving right along this evening, informational items, we have Planning Commission minutes, that was in our packets, just, I don't know if anybody has any concerns or questions on governing that? All right, well, I'm, I'm guess I'll turn this over to, I, I will ask a couple of questions in reference to you, hopefully you can cover this in your report, Mr. Engel. I know we got some important things coming up, like our seventy-fifth anniversary and our Merriam Drive Live and, uh, Night Out Against Crime, I think are three things upcoming. I'm, I don't, have not written down those dates, I don't know if you have those in your head or not, but, um, if you could at least alert us to those dates.
Thank you, I'll give a couple of dates first, while I'm looking those up. First one, uh, Mayor mentioned it, I wanna thank staff and all the volunteers for a very successful car show. It was super hot, it's probably the warmest one that I've been to. But, uh, it was, uh, fantastic, and clearly, uh, with the record-setting numbers, it continues to grow, which is fantastic after twenty-five years. But I wanna thank Julie, Anna, and, uh, the volunteers for, uh, really putting all that together. Renee, uh, also by name. Uh, second one is, as I mentioned before, Shake Shack opens this week. That represents a successful completion of the construction phase of Merriam Grand Station, which is ahead of schedule, open, operating, still working a little bit of kinks out here and there over, but it's, uh, it's, it's a fantastic addition to the community, and we're glad to see that thing finally, uh, up and off the ground. Um, National Night Out, i- and the rededication of the McFarland Fields is October seventh at Waterfall Park. Um, our Merriam Drive Live is October fourth, Saturday, October fourth. What was the third one, Mayor?
Um, well, our, our anniversary, uh, and then also large item pickup, I might, I thought.
Large item pickup is the third week in October, starting on Monday, the twentieth, running to the twenty-fourth. And, sorry, one more time, what was the other one?
Uh, our, our birthday party.
Birthday party, thank you. Birthday party is ch-ch-ch-ch-ch twenty-third, thank you. October twenty-third at, sorry, I gotta drill down to the day here. I think we're gonna get there, here we go, twenty-third. Four PM to eight PM, Merriam Marketplace, be there, be square.
Lots of exciting things coming up in Merriam this time.
Absolutely, absolutely. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Engel?
As best I can, while I have my calendar open.
Sorry to put you into the pressure there, I, I should've looked those up myself.
We're gonna have a recycling event, too.
Oh, yeah, recycling event is in October.
October eleventh.
October eleventh, recycling.
That's a very important one.
There we go, thank you. Probably be recycling lithium batteries.
No, we won't be.
We won't be doing that there, oh, sorry, chief.
We're not, we're not qualified.
We, we, we're not taking those. Oh, any other questions for Mr. Engel, okay. Okay, I know we have no executive session this evening?
No, sir.
My gosh, okay, well, I, I would entertain a motion this evening, then, Ms. Hands.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Move we adjourn, we have a second, Ms. Shadrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is adjourned.